I will do it. Instead of a prayer to begin this meeting, I got this Christmas card today, actually from one of our employees, and it has just touched my heart in a special way. On the front it says, "This Christmas, let's give a little Jesus." And it has a picture of the baby Jesus on the outside. It says, "This Christmas, let's give a little Jesus, a thoughtful word or deed, an act of generosity for someone who's in need. Let's give a little Jesus to everyone we meet, the sales clerk, or the server, or the person on the street. Let's give a little Jesus. That's what really counts, not how much we spend or bought, for whom, or what amount. Let's give a little Jesus to everyone, large or small, for Jesus the Messiah is the greatest gift of all."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting to order, and a couple items up front. There's been a number of stories going around about that we're going to be talking about an issue dealing with a place called Hampton Inn on 30A. And that is not on the agenda. It's a planning commission item that is scheduled for January the 8th. So anybody that's here for Ham-
December 11th.
It's December 11th.
It's been delayed. It's going on January the 8th's Planning Commission. They've asked for a delay.
Oh, really?
So on January the 8th, at the Planning Commission, if you happen to be here for Hampton Inn, we'll again bring it up when we talk about the planning items, but instead of anybody sitting there waiting for it to come up, it is not coming up.
When you come up to the podium to do any speaking, I'd ask you that you state your
name and spell your last name for the record. We want everyone to be respectful of one another. We want you to direct all comments to the issue involved, and if you're addressing the board, please address the chair, and we will avoid personal attacks. Okay. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under additions to the agenda, under consent agenda agreements and contracts, a request to approve the enter into a grant agreement with DEP number S-0783 with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, which provides financial assistance for the Walton County Coastal Dean Lakes Culvert Replacement Environmental Management Plan. That's an agreement we have in place that's due to expire, so we're just asking you to renew that agreement so we can continue seeking those funds. Also, a rest request approval of assignment of agreement for local and long-distance telephone service for the Department of Corrections with Embark Payphone Services, Inc. This was in place when we transferred the jail to the sheriff's office, and we did not do an assignment of that agreement, so we're asking you to assign this agreement to the sheriff's office. Sheriff is actually looking at other systems, but this contract is in place, and so once we assign it to him, he can do with it as he chooses. Under the county attorney request to reschedule a special meeting and close executive session to discuss the Fred DeFrancesca versus Walton County, Florida case number 2012 CA-193.
Motion to approve these.
I've got one more thing. And this is, we're not going to ask for any action today, but if you recall, we've been in the process of accepting applications for our restore coordinator position. We have received those applications. We actually want some direction. It may be a good idea that because some of you commissioners have been deeply involved with the Restore Act, that you provide the final interviews for those. We'd be glad for you to do that if you wish. I think the review committee has narrowed, selected six to interview. We can narrow it down further with that with interviews, or whatever you choose to do, we'd be glad to work with you.
I'm asking for answer now.
Just direction?
I would maybe say narrow it down to three, and then let us, you know, because I mean, Cindy and I both have been deeply involved in this process.
Yeah, I think-
I certainly would like to interview.
Okay.
I think three is good.
Okay.
But I understand, though, I think there's two military veterans who have to be interviewed.
Yes.
We'll work through that. And if there's four that we think would be appropriate, or five, we will move those forward, but we will move at least three forward.
Three to five.
Okay.
That's good for me.
All right.
Okay. Do you hear a motion to approve the additions and deletions?
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Next we have to approve the agenda with the additions or deletions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, do we have any public comments with regard to an issue that's on the agenda? Okay, seeing none? I'm sorry, come on, sir.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Blake Ward. I live at 163 Domenica Court in Miramar Beach, Florida. Also Ward, W-A-R-D.
Thank you.
Work for Benesi Development Company. I see on the agenda tonight is an abatement for Empire Truck Sales in Mossy Head, and I'm here in support of that. I looked at the impact studies and stuff that you provided online. I think yearly $1,250 for a job produced is a good thing to do for the county to create jobs. I commend previous boards and this board, and Larry and planning staff for getting Mossy Head Industrial Park off hold. Activity, bridge activity, I've done this for a long time. The development business, everywhere I've been, county and city governments do these types of things in industrial parks.
Okay. The issue specifically in front of the board on that issue tonight is, does it comply with the policies that the board accepted?
Exactly. Well, as a large landowner in Mossy Head, I'm just here to support that.
Thank you.
Abatement agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
None further? Mr. Jones?
I need a copy of the question y'all approved at the last meeting.
Should be in the minutes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I've spoken to Mr. Bagby earlier, and there's an item under the TDC's agenda that may want to clear up a little bit and jump in if I make sure I get this right, but there's the issue of the recommendations from the beach vendors. I think it's the intent just to present that to the board and set a public hearing on July, uh, July, January the 6th to receive public input from that, and just wanted to address that early, that if anyone was here to discuss it, that I don't think you're prepared to take public-
So we're only going to be reviewing, we're only going to be accepting it for review?
Correct. And between now and that meeting, you know, to meet with Mr. Bagby and his staff and look at their recommendations and have input in-
And at the January meeting, we'll take public comment.
That's correct.
And I would have them being scheduled, Mr. Bagby, but if anyone else has comments, could I send those to them as well?
Sure. Yeah. So that was the date you were recommending? Actually, you said it whenever you wanted.
Okay, so this is a public hearing or a workshop?
It would be a workshop to take public input.
Oh, okay.
The other thing you will want to decide is whether you commissioners want to be a part of that, or you want it to be a staff meeting, and let staff bring those recommendations back to you.
Could they bring that recommendations back to you next, at our next board meeting?
Ma'am?
The next board meeting's going to be in January. No, no, it's December.
No, it's 22nd.
We'll have those recommendations on the 22nd.
Okay.
But whether it's going to be a staff workshop or a board workshop.
Okay. So if you're here regarding that item, the board, the only action you'll take, if you want to take it now, just to make it formal, go ahead.
I think it should be a board workshop, because I think the thing we had on the beach project was very helpful and very good. I think everybody, you know, could hear what everybody was asking. It was run very well. I think this could probably run like that.
You're going to hear it anyway, so.
Where we take, you know, where we get public comments, and we can listen, we can ask questions. That would be what I would think.
Well, maybe a suggestion would be, between now and the next board meeting, have those, let you guys meet with the staff, Mr. Bagby, whomever, and get your comments included, so that meeting, we can move that out to the public, they'll know exactly where we're trying to get to. Something along those lines?
Do we want to go ahead and set the date so we can advertise, June of January?
January.
January. At least I'm moving back a month. January of the 6th at 4:00 PM here at the annex. Do we want to go ahead and set a definite time? Ladies and gentlemen?
Okay, let's go ahead and set it. January 6th at 4:00 PM.
At 4:00 PM, yeah.
Workshop.
Do you need that form of motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
A motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
January 6th.
And a reminder to all that at a workshop, there will be no board action taken. We're there just to learn, as you will be there to learn, or to comment, but there will be no board action taken at that. And then you got the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda's out there?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Calls a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I think this might be the secret. You know, I may have to be on the hearing at the night.
Okay, for any late comers that have come in, a reminder that the Hampton Inn issue is a planning commission issue, not a board issue tonight, and it'll be heard on January the 8th at the Planning Commission.
Did you consent agenda?
Just did it.
Sir, I didn't get here a little late. Is there not a public hearing sign on that property for the Hampton Inn? There is not a-
The next scheduled hearing for it was to be this Thursday night for the Planning Commission, not for the Board of County Commissioners, but they have submitted a request to delay it until January the 8th for the Planning Commission. It's not a Board of County Commissioner meeting, the Planning Commission, January the 8th.
January the 8th?
Yes, ma'am.
There should be a set notice to sign, you know, for public hearing. So January-
January the 8th. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item, actually our first three items will be from Ms. Holly Holt with the Health Department. She's going to give us a brief update on Ebola, and request approval of a fee for drug assistance program, and request to apply for work at health grant. Her first item requires no action from the board, the other two will.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Holly Holt, H-O-L-T is my last name. I just wanted to talk a few minutes about Ebola. This has been something that we've been working very hard on since October. Everybody knows in the news what's been going on, but I wanted to bring it locally to Walton County and kind of tell you what's going on in the state. As y'all know, back in 1977, '76, and if you don't know, Ebola was actually found near the Ebola River in Central Africa, and there was an Ebola epidemic that came out in March of 2014. It was spread to six countries. Now, a couple of the countries, Nigeria and Senegal, Ebola has been stopped, but it's still very prevalent, remains intense in Guyana, Liberia, Sierra Leone, and now it's in Mali. There's 17,551 cases there and 6,202 deaths. Where the United States is concerned, we've got one healthcare worker that has been exposed and has arrived in the United States, December the 4th, and they're being tested and under observation. We have no cases in Florida right now. Potentially, we are looking at how we can deal with people that might be coming into our county as well as in the state. And so if anybody's traveled to Guyana, Liberia, Mali, or Sierra Leone within the past three weeks, or they've come in contact, and they've come in contact with someone who's been infected and symptomatic with Ebola, we are looking at those individuals. How is Ebola transmitted? It's basically Ebola, it's transmitted through saliva, sweat, vomit, diarrhea, blood, urine, and through any type of contaminated materials. It's also spread through the broken skin or mucous membranes, membranes which could be your mouth, and your eyes, and those types of things. Some of the symptoms are abrupt fever, severe headaches, muscle pains, vomiting and diarrhea, abdominal pain, and of course, when it gets to unexplained hemorrhage, it's pretty bad then. The incubation period for this is two to 21 days. The average range of symptoms are eight to 10 days. This is what I want to spread, really stress here in our community. A person that is infected with Ebola virus is not contagious until symptoms appear. We, as in the Health Department, has been putting up some, going with the, for the CDC guidelines, we've been putting up some signs in our Health Department when somebody first enters our facility, that we ask them those specific questions. Have you traveled to these countries? Have you come in contact with anybody that has Ebola? And do you have any fever or any symptoms? And then from that point, we actually isolate the individual and quarantine. We've been working very closely with our healthcare workers, partners in our community, with Sacred Heart, with Healthmark, with the EOC, emergency management. Several of us have had meetings looking at different things that we needed to deal with in our community if it was to come here in our community. We've been collaborating with those individuals. We've been providing a lot of training for personal protective equipment with our healthcare providers, our first responders. We're in the process of helping with them with those kind of things. And we've been working very closely with our hospitals to do tabletop exercises and drills to prepare for symptoms, for situations as that like Ebola and some other contagious diseases. So basically, we work with our healthcare partners to identify a patient at risk for Ebola, to isolate the patient for screening or testing, and to inform us locally, so we can inform our state office and work with the CDC if something were to happen. The last thing I just want to mention for you today, if you're very, if you're interested in this topic, or what we need to be doing in our community, you can look, you can go to www.floordouthelf.gov and www.cdc.gov to keep up with what's going on, to avoid travel to countries at risk, and be prepared for the flu season, which the flu season is here. We've actually been notified that we're already at the peak season here. And normally, it's January, February, we're already seeing. It's very, it's out there, but it's not too late to get your flu shot, to wash your hands frequently, to avoid touching your face, and to stay at home when you're sick. So I just wanted to give you a very brief update about Ebola. Is there any questions from anybody?
Got it. Next item?
Mr. Chairman, the next item, Ms. Holt's requesting on behalf of the Health Department that you approve, in addition to their fee schedule, for a $10 fee per application year for those wishing to use their drug assistance program, and that's $10 per year per applicant.
Right.
So it's not a per prescription, but this program they have ongoing, and there's no fee for it now.
Right, no fee. And we would like to sustain this program, so we're looking at doing this. This was given to, actually, it was funded by a grant, and the grant is going to be going away, so we'd like to keep doing this. And a person is elect, they can elect to do this, or do this on their own.
What's wishes of the board?
We should charge a nominal fee, then all fee, so I guess that's my motion.
Okay. A motion in the second. Any comment? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Next item is, they are requesting that our OMB facilitate their receiving a work at health grant. We do this occasionally for the Health Department, but the board would receive the funds and disperse them per the grant back to the Health Department. This is a requirement, since they will be utilizing the funds, they can't expend them or receive them. Is that correct? And I think it's $4,000?
$4,000.
Go ahead, Chairman.
Ms. Holt?
Yes.
In reading the background information here, "It will help employees develop a skillset and capacity to build or enhance a science-based workplace health program." Now, if it's that important, why doesn't the state reach out there and help fund these type of things, instead of always reaching down to the county level to have them fund these programs that they think, or seem to think, is very important to them and their employees? And my may vote for the last one is almost in line with what I just got through saying. It seems like the state of Florida's Health Department, and I'm not picking on you, because it is, comes out of Tallahassee, but it seems like they're always coming down and wanting a little more from the counties to take care and support programs that they think are important to the health of our people in the county. And it just, I just have issues with that.
Well, I will say, from the previous, both of these programs were not, the program that we had, the previous program that deals with the pharmaceutical assistance, was a program that we decided to move forward. It is not one that comes down from the state. So that's through the Pharmaceutical Assistance Program. Even though they feel like it's important, we still have to find the financial sustainability for that program, if that makes sense to you. And we felt like it was important for the citizens of Walton County, so that was the first one. The second one, dealing with the work at health grant, that's actually not coming down from the state. That's another grant that we were, we decided we would apply for that grant, because it does do something to help us to promote wellness in our community, and with us as employees, so we could be walking the talk, and then sharing that with the community.
Tallahassee doesn't feel that way?
They feel that way, but these were options that we chose, that we wanted to do to further what we felt like our vision and mission were for our county Health Department locally.
I understand that. I appreciate that. But then again, I still think the state Department of Health should be the one that is advocating for these things, instead of waiting on the individual county health departments to do this stuff. If they think it's that important, then they ought to find the funding to do it. That's just my soapbox. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any comments? Wishes of the board?
Motion to approve. Sorry.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is regarding a, we have been contacted by a nationwide cell, cellular provider has approached the county about the possibility of using county right-of-ways and buildings to install their new small cell technology. Before we entered into any discussions to bring any greater details, we wanted to board's blessings. But in a nutshell, the new cell technology are very small boxes that they mount on buildings and mount on power poles and those type of things. And this particular provider was interested in discussing with the county utilizing some of our buildings or right-of-ways. We are compensated for it, so recognizing that there's been some activity lately on looking at broadband initiatives as maybe a source of funding that can help fund some of those things. So would you seeking your permission to move forward with these folks, see what they have to offer, and see if there are others that may be interested in something similar?
I'll make a motion. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion and-
As I understand it, it's going to start in South Bend, and we certainly need some of this technology to market.
I understand. Yes, ma'am.
Second.
Second, okay. Any other comments? Public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I tried to talk to our county administrator today, and he had just seen you couldn't talk to him till the guy went back from seeing you, because of myself.
That's right. I lived, it was a ruse.
He just didn't want to talk to me about your thing.
It worked.
I bought it.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is regarding the tax, adult tax abatement for Empire Trucks and their request. As you wear, over the last two or three meetings, we've moved this process forward, and at the last meeting, you were presented with a formula of calculating the impacts of granting such exemptions, the authority that you had to do that. And earlier, we were asked to put together a, an assessment of qualifying those candidates that come before us with those requests. You approved a formula and a mechanism to move us to the day. Actually, we had three that we were speaking of at that time, Triangle Chevrolet, Professional Products, and Empire Trucks. The Triangle Chevrolet and Professional Products request are not at the point where we would move them forward, yet they've got some work to do with the tax collector, property appraiser, excuse me. So what you have before you today is a result of taking the numbers that were supplied by Empire Trucks and plugged into the formula that you approved, and it generated what you have before you today, and that based on those factors, and the, with the amount of investment they're making, and the number, the amount of the new payroll they're creating within the county, they qualify for a 100% exemption for their adult taxes for up to 10 years. You can make it anywhere between those two numbers. So we're just presenting to you the facts that were generated through plugging their numbers into the formula. And again, any approvals you give will be contingent upon a contract with these criteria laid out in it, with annual reviews to assure they're still in compliance with what you granted them.
Can I ask a question? In the criteria, I just, I have a couple of questions about it. The contract, it'll come before the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct? Okay. And then will the review come before the board? In other words, it will?
We certainly can.
It will?
We put a calendar on it, and each year, we will do that review, and we'll present you those findings.
Each anniversary of compliance review will be completed. Who will it be completed by?
I'm sorry. Probably between us, legal, and finance, and if we need to get you the tax collector or the property appraiser involved, we can do that, but I mean, it's not going to be huge. You told us you'd have this many jobs, how many jobs you had. You told us this was payroll, we want to see your certified payroll numbers, and you know, you told us you were going to invest this much money, we need, we need to see where that was done.
Okay.
What's the current head of the law of tax we get from there?
The-
From the property right now?
Zero.
Zero.
I guess I'll start the ball out rolling for discussion. I'll make the motion that we give them 100% exemption for five years, and then renew it at the end of that five years. I mean, I see the jobs we're going to create, and when I was president of the Chamber of Commerce, I was told over and over that any business that comes in, my paycheck turns over seven times, we're going to be using it. And, you know, these people that hopefully will move here, some already live here, but they will have a better income, they will spend their money, they will buy goods at the grocery store, and at the tie store, and they'll buy gas. So I think it's a win, because we're getting zero on the property right now. I think it's a win for Walton County. Let's give them five years, and then review it at the end of five years. I mean, I know we're going to review it every year, but to see if we want extended or not extended.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Second.
One of the things in that discussion I'd like to add is, this is my concern, that, you know, that this, this seems small right now. But, you know, people, as people get in line, this is my concern, is that three years from now, we have a major hurricane, or an oil spill, or a recession. Taxes plummet. The value of the beach property that's paying 90% of the adult loans right now plummets. And we're looking at a budget that we can't meet. And we have to lay off staff, and we have to, can we, as part of this agreement, and part of this thing, say that should the economy, or something happen that would negatively impact our ability to raise, to gain, to get revenue, that we can end the agreement with them? Because think about this, think about right in the middle of the recession, and then we had an oil spill, and we're lucky we didn't have a hurricane, back to back to back to back. And we're looking at, we're looking at giving away tax money when we're going to desperately need it. And that is my problem with this whole thing.
Commissioner, you can, the statute and the policy allows you to, I think the motion was for five years. You can actually do it year to year if you choose to do so. I mean, that's, that's within the ambit of both the statute and the-
Well, I realize that, but-
I certainly think we can put some language in the agreement that would say, "In the event, adult moral assessments fall X percent," then that would negate.
Because, you know, people don't want to have their taxes raised, you know, and we don't want to raise their taxes, but we're going to put ourselves, I think, in a precarious position at some point.
We can certainly put qualifying language in the agreement.
Because it seems great to give somebody 100% tax exemption. That's great. But, but I think that that bill was really used, I think most people voted on that bill thinking, "This is an incentive bill." Yeah, if Monsanto wants to come in, we can work a deal- Yeah, if Monsanto wants to come in, we can work a deal with them. Not that we give everybody 100% exemption that's, you know, that meets the criteria that we came up with, which is, which is fine. I'm just concerned because I think our economy is very tenuous. A storm can come at any time. And we know what happens to our economy here when the rentals and the beach goes away.
I think you certainly put the language in the event of a devastating economic event.
If it would need to be quantified, I think it's quantified tied to a percentage reduction in the tax base, I think would be a way to go about it.
Yeah, and whatever that would be, because I'm, I'm just leery of giving people five, 10 years worth of tax exemptions. I mean, you know, everybody, everybody would love to have five years, you know. And all us people in South Walton who are renting and are creating jobs, 3% unemployment. We're all creating jobs. And I think that, you know, this is well and good for a lot of businesses that don't want to pay, you know, taxes, but I, you know, I have a problem with it. I don't think we ought to give anybody 100%.
Do you, do you want to amend the motion then to include the language such that if you have a catastrophic event?
Well, I would like to amend the, you know, our, whatever contract that we write with them. I would like language in there that would say, should the tax revenues drop below a certain percentage, and I don't know how, you know, the timing on that would be...
I want in my motion, you made your second. Who made second?
He did.
What's your amendment?
That in the, that we put a clause in the contract that, or what is it, in the event of a catastrophic economic event that we...
Why don't you let us work on that language and we'll bring it back to you in the form of the contract. And if it's not what you want, we'll go from there. But the motion, the motion tonight would be subject to the language to be adopted in the contract.
Yeah, okay.
That way you're covered with...
And, you know, I don't think we ought to give anybody 100% tax exemption. I mean, that's just not, that's just un-American, in my opinion.
Well, if I remember, people walk out and vote for this. There was not something that wouldn't be able, people walk out and vote for this.
Well, yeah, they voted for this, but they, they, they didn't, they didn't, they're not going to look at every... When they voted for this, they didn't have any details. They said, sure, offer people incentives. When they want to bring jobs here, offer them incentives. They're already here and they're built, you know.
And I think so, some of it's tied to the fact of what they're going to do in the way of investment in the county plus their payrolls. But, you know, your point is well taken, and I think that when we see the contract language come back, that'll, that'll help crystallize it. Do you have any public comment on it?
Well, yeah, because I would like to say 50% exemption up to three years.
Mr. Fletcher, please come up again. Name, spell your last name, and the issue is the language with regard to the passing of this exemption.
My name is Bill Fletcher, F-L-E-T-C-H-E-R. I'm not sure I understand, I cannot give you some observations about why I think you should deny this.
What, what we're asking for here is that there's been a submission that says these items are compatible with what the policy of the board is for granting an exemption. And we're here to say, that's the issue, is are they compatible with it? And are we going forward with over a one-year, three-year, five-year timeframe? Which, with now an out to say that if there's an economic downturn, it can be terminated. But we're looking to see, does this comply with the policy that the board adopted?
I think citizens should be able to speak their mind about whatever they want.
Excuse me, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Well, I agree with you, Commissioner Meadows. I can tell you that if, back in 2010 or back when we had the recession, having this type of an exemption would make some sense. You've got a jewel at Mossy Head and it's been put on the map by Loves. Loves paid $47,000 an acre for land over at 231 and I-10. There's no comparison to this property up here. If you've ever driven by there, you can see that.
Okay, Mr. Fletcher, the issue right now is the Empire Truck and their submission of a request to be compatible with the policy that the board adopted.
Is there any opportunity for the public to voice their dissent?
At the end of the meeting, there's always room for public comment.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Harris, did you want to speak too?
Can I wait? Do I have to come up here? If I don't take one, sir.
Again, state your name, spell your last name.
Suzanne Harris, H-A-R-R-I-S, very easy. Not on the, not on the thing. If Edgewater hires 35 mates in March, do I qualify?
The issue is solely with the submission of Empire Truck with regards to their...
With your new, with your new...
Excuse me, Ms. Harris, excuse me, Ms. Harris. The issue that's in front of the board right now is the request by Empire Truck, and are they compliant with the policy that the board had established? And if you, if you want to talk about...
So that's all you can talk about until you've already voted on it. Then at the end of the meeting, we can voice our opinion on anything. Is that what you're saying, Bill?
The issue that's in front of the board right now deals with the request by Empire Truck.
Then I'd like to ask Sarah to amend her motion to not approve it until the public is allowed to speak.
Dr. Riley?
Don Riley, R-I-L-E-Y. Within the context of the constraints that you've imposed, I would simply ask, is this within the prerogative of the chair? Or does this require a change in the policies of this board with respect to constraints on citizen's speech? Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Next item.
A request from County Office of Management and Budget regarding engaging Maximus Consulting Services to provide a cost allocation plan for the county and the general fund. The scope of this will be for them to review the costs associated with taking those core activities that we do within the county from admin to HR to budget office, and determining what percentage of those are allocatable to other departments within the county. For instance, Building Department utilizes our budget office and our HR. The Building Department is an enterprise fund which generates their own revenue. So we're, while we did charge some of those back this year, this study would give us a, in greater depth and detail and more accurate reflection of how those funds could be allocated, that we're asking for it not to exceed an amount of $11,500. And the TDC has agreed to fund one half of that. Those TDC will be included in that as well. So at the end of the day, what we hope to come from this is an allocation of general revenue funds that are, that are supporting particularly those areas that are self-funded or funding generating activities, mosquito control, Building Department.
And in what way does that help us? I mean, you know...
Well, it helps us that we can charge to those revenue generating entities the amounts that's being paid out of general revenue funds. For instance, HR supports TDC and Building Department. Finance supports TDC and Building Department just for two. Both of those entities generate their own funds to pay for themselves. So currently, or up until this year, the general fund was supplementing their revenues by paying those costs entirely. We did do an allocation this year, but this, these folks will give us a more detailed and more accurate reflection of what those allocations should be.
To a certain extent, it'll reflect a reduction of their reliance on ad valorem taxes to pay for all those costs. So any that you can shift to another revenue stream will reduce the need to, to maintain a certain level of ad valorem.
Have the services we do in-house, and then have we done selling in-house?
Well, and I may defer to Melissa because she did one this year. There was some, a little bit of pushback for it, and we just wanted to get it as accurate as we could so that we're not charging any more than the services we provide. Is that reasonable?
And I think the object is to get an unbiased, third-party study that both sides can accept.
It's not, it's not a money-making deal for the county, it's just, it's just...
It's just an expense so that maybe it's not the best way to spend our money.
Understand, we can...
And Commissioners?
The clerk, in reviewing the agenda with me, has some concerns about this being a allowed expense out of TDC funds. We'll work through that, if it's not, we'll come back and let you know.
If it's not allowed in TDC funds, then we would have to pay the whole thing.
I think TDC, Jim, didn't y'all say you'd pay for half of it, or?
Well, it, it, that's true, but the question is whether or not it's allowed expenditure, he and I will...
Why don't we clear that up and we just ask the board at the next meeting to consider it when we know those details?
That would be good.
That we get?
We'll make sure we know.
Next item, we're requesting your permission to seek quotes and to purchase a performance management appraisal system. We think this will be less than $5,000, but if you recall through the budget process, there was some question about utilizing merit increases as opposed to total cost of living. And at that point, we just didn't have a real good way of doing that. This will give us a tool and a resource for our management staff to utilize in doing their annual appraisals of our employees, and will give us that ability at the end of the year.
And I'm not seeing the software, but is this the kind of software? I was reviewing Mr. Bagby's contract and I noticed that we need to do yearly evaluations. Is this the kind of software that we could use for that?
You certainly can. This is somewhat an ongoing mechanism that you can go in anytime and make whatever comments, notes you need to. So that at the end of the year, you can compile all that and know exactly where your...
Motion to approve.
Any comment? Any public comment? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next two items are regarding Public Works' request for RFQs for engineering and design. These are coming before you because the projects are above the threshold for which we can use our continuing service agreements. The first one is County Road 181C from State Road 81 to the Holmes County Line. This request is for an RFQ for engineering, design, and construction, engineering services for the resurfacing of that road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Any public comment? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Very similar request for an RFQ for engineering, design, and construction, engineering inspection services for the paving of Walton Bridge Road from County Road 280 to Rock Hill Road. And again, this has to go out for RFQ because of the size of the project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comment? Any public comment? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is regarding a grant, the grant of an easement from the United States Air Force on Boundary Line Road. I'll commend Mr. Commander and Melinda Whitman in our office for enduring this process. Two and a half years, I think.
It's been longer than that. It's been almost since I've been in office to get this done.
And a stack of paperwork to that, just for them to give us permission to pave the road. So we finally got there, and with your approval, we'll accept that easement and be able to move forward with that roadwork.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comment?
Well, I do want to comment thanks to Public Works. I'll say this has been a long road, excuse the fun. I mean, the road isn't even on Eglin property, but it does touch it. And we have had to do environmental studies and creature studies and archaeological studies. And I mean, it's just been horrendous and we finally, I guess we wore them down.
And Commissioners, let me also say Karen in my office spent a significant amount of time with the folks of the Air Force about language. The first one we got was catastrophic, and this is a much cleaner...
But this will just about pave out Choctaw, so we do not have to send another grader down there. And that's what costs the county money when you're talking roads, is grading these roads going back week after week. And this will just about get all of the, the pavedable roads that we can pave in Choctaw and Villatasta done.
Any public comment? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next two items, Commissioners, are regarding change orders. First, this change order number one for contract 014-018 with Mid-South Paving for improvements of County Road 1084. This is a decrease in the contract amount of $17,219 and the contract time to be increased by 30 days. We had some underruns on certain items that allowed us to generate some revenue that allowed us to pull some alternatives into the project. But the bottom line is this is a reduction of $17,219.2. It does extend by 30 days for various issues. We recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second, that's the two cents, Will.
That's...
That's your tip.
Somebody's tip, there you go.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Any public comment? See none? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is a change order for contract number 013-020 CW Roberts for the final phase of County, or County Road 2 Phase 3. This is somewhat of a cleanup, it doesn't cost any money, but there was some, some traceable means documenting the changes that had taken place, and this certainly just cleans up that process. And again, there's no additional funds required.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Any public comment? See none? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bagby?
Good afternoon, Jennifer Vigil on behalf of the TDC. The first item that we have is request for the approval of the agreement for a Maximus contract to evaluate the tourist development tax collection cost study. It's very similar to the Maximus study that, cost allocation study that you just tabled to the next meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Any public comment? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We have one nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The second item is a request to approve $75,000 from the $500,000 you've previously approved to take $75,000 of that from the emerging markets air carrier recruitment funds to use in promoting a united direct flight, which will begin next March, between Houston Busch and the Northwest Florida Beaches International Airport. I can answer your questions. We also have, as a guest in the audience, Parker McPloughan, who is the head of the Airport Authority over there. Right back there.
He's hiding in the back.
He's hiding in the back.
Hiding in the back. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Any public comment? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Brian Kellenberger, K-E-L-L-E-N-B-E-R-G-E-R, Director of Beach Operations, Walton County TDC. Our business tonight is to request to advertise for bids to paint the visitor's center. We included in our budget for fiscal year 2015, $75,000 to miscellaneous repairs and next year, paint for the visitor's center.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Any public comment?
What color are you going to paint it?
I don't know yet.
Can we just choose the colors?
I don't know yet. My assumption is it'll be within the same scheme it's in now, including our new logo colors as well.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, John Irvin, E-R-V-I-N, Director of Marketing Communications with the TDC. We actually have four documents regarding this one item in front of you, two briefs and two schedules. They are sister campaigns. This is funded by dollars in the existing approved fiscal year budget. We did have support by the marketing committee, but there was not a quorum present to send through a recommendation. But we did get a unanimous recommendation from the TDC council last week to request permission to deploy these two campaigns.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any public comments? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And I'll finish up with the rest of them, Commissioners. The request, we are requesting approval to advertise for... The request, we are requesting approval to advertise for a strategic planning RFQ. The, this was unanimously approved, this request by the TDC informed for your consideration. This is part of our budgeting process. We do the strategic planning, which drives hopefully then our budgeting for both our media and for our operations.
Motion to approve. Tag team.
Snag it.
Have a motion in the second. Any comments? Any public comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then we understand the workshop will get direction at the meeting on the 22nd on whether or not the workshop is a staff workshop or a VCC workshop.
I think there's a general consensus that the board plans to be there too because we'd like to hear it. So I think, I can't speak for my other Commissioners, but I intend to be there because I think it's an important one.
Yeah, I think we decided.
Yes, that workshop is at the point when we will take public comment about it as long as we get this submitted to us so that we can have some thoughts and questions before then.
I think the way that the other meeting was run, was conducted with the questions and all that was excellent, an excellent way to do it.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to do that, but I thought that was an excellent way to do it.
Well, again, if we can give Mr. Bagby ahead of time a list of our questions, get them printed out, and so that when people come up, they can see that these are the questions that are going to be asked. If they have some other ones, they could submit them too. We can keep it going in an orderly fashion. I thought you did a real good job with the last meeting.
And that was the whole purpose of the stalking horse that is before you tonight is you directed us to bring back some proposals. That's a starting point in the discussions, and we get feedback on those specific proposals as opposed to people just throwing stuff all over the place. Not that they can't add questions or add issues.
I think it's also important that we let constituents input prior to the meeting in case, you know, that could be here. Just any comments, and then I would like to see those as well.
Sure. I would hope that you would individually meet with each of the Commissioners to discuss them so that we all are as versed as possible going into that workshop so that we can entertain additional questions or have more of our own to add to it. Please handle that.
Yes, sir. And then updates and the way updates, bed tax for the month of October was up 27.45%. Revenue was $969,000 on a 4% tax, which was actually higher than it was last year on a 4.5% bed tax. And so we had a great October. Part of that was fall break schedule. Part of that was a lot of the events that we had drawing people down here and the gorgeous weather. And so we were blessed in October. We've also been notified that we've, will be the recipients of two Adrian Awards. A gold Adrian Award for our airport takeovers, where we wrap carousels and put our message there. And then a silver Adrian for the engagement that we did at the 900 shops in Chicago on the Miracle Mile last year. And subject to your questions, oh, and we also have a nice spread in Southwest Magazine. So everybody that gets on a Southwest airplane anywhere in the world, this, in the month of December, we have a gorgeous spread. That's one of our pictures. That was the picture that they used. And there's our ad with six of our partners listed on the ad on a two-page spread. And then we have some highlights about our destination. And so, subject to your questions, that's all we have this evening.
But I think you should congratulate your staff that were involved in getting those awards. Thank you.
They did. They did a great job.
We have a, you have a question? Yes.
Don Riley, once again, R.I.L.Y. I'm curious as to why in an update on the Tourist Development Council, there is no mention of the resignation, letter of resignation tendered by Brad Pickle. I think this is a matter of some considerable note and interest to the general public. And I think that it is something that this council should consider this evening and should accept. I'm mystified as to why it wasn't brought up. Thank you.
I plan on bringing it up later and under my time, Dr. Riley. But Jim, go ahead.
Sure. Brad has a lot going on right now. Tried to talk to him yesterday. His mother underwent quadruple bypass surgery in Knoxville last Friday. And she was still in the ICU. She was supposed to be out of the ICU on Saturday. She was still in the ICU yesterday. And that coupled with his family commitments and some other things, and some other frustrations, I guess, that he was having with, you know, within the community, some of the charges against him personally that were leveled. I think he was hurt by those. What I asked him to do was go, you know, spend time with his mom last week. And when he left here Tuesday, he went straight to Knoxville. He didn't go back to South Carolina. And that he and I would discuss this when things were a little calmer after the holidays, and that there might be some accommodation. I think this was a reaction to some things that have nothing to do with his desire to help this county and help the project, whether there is a project or isn't a project. And so I would just ask, I think as a essential, an email, give us till the holidays. Let Brad and I sit down and see if that's still his intent, is to terminate the contract early or if he's going to fulfill the contract to the end. I mean, we've all gone through.
When does the contract end, Jim?
I believe it's in May. I don't have the exact date.
From March to May?
And so he said that it would be, he would, his letter said March first or something.
Right, right. And that he would help us. You know, we've all gone through periods in our lives where we had things going on that we just thought we needed to clear the decks of some other things. And so I think he's, all he's given this community over the last 12 or 14 years, however long, when he was an employee and stuff, I think we owe it to him to give him a little time to kind of get his keel get even back out. But if after December, he says, or after the holidays, he says, no, I think I want to move on, the contract allows him to do that, allows us to do that also. So it's, I would just.
One of those things.
One of those things that let's wait and see what, where he is and where we are after the holidays, I would guess.
And I certainly do not disagree with you. I've known Brad, you know, for enough since I worked for the county. I think his heart has always been here. And there has been some things lately that, you know, he's worked on this beach re-nourishment project. So any of us that have worked on anything that hard, I understand he has some, you know, down feelings. I don't blame, I would too, you know. I think we need to, as you're right, give him through the holidays, but we also need to be thinking ahead. What, if his contract is terminated, if he decides to contract, you know, end his contract. We don't have, we have a very narrow window to interview people, get them on board, and hire them. So I agree, we need to give him some time. I certainly respect the man enough to do that. But then, in the back of our minds, we need to be thinking, well, if it does happen, what are we going to do? What's the next step?
It's a highly specialized field. I mean, there's probably a handful of people that actually do it. So, you know, that's, I agree. I think we should at least, at least let things settle out and see what, see what happens during the holidays.
You know, I understand his father is not that well either. So, I mean, when you've got a young man like that, his parents are not well, of course, his heart and his mind is with his parents, with his family. We would all ask for that grace, I think.
Any other comment? Any other comments? Thank you, Jim. Yes, sir.
Mr. Hudson, were you saying?
Was that a, are you waving at the flies or you, did you want to speak, Bob? Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have five items. The first is a request to consider and/or approve a resolution repealing Resolution 2014-37. That's a resolution we previously passed that granted, that set fees for the use of our parks. When it was passed afterwards, the Parks and Recreation folks came to me sometime later and said, one of the heartaches they're having is there's times they would like to be able to grant waivers. But in the previous ordinance, all waivers had to be granted by the Board of County Commissioners, and there was a time issue with that many times, especially for churches and schools and other nonprofits. So they asked if we could take a look at redrafting the resolution and allowing them to grant the waivers so long as it meets the other parameters of their fee waiver requests.
You know, I don't mind maybe churches and schools so much, but I take a look at the city of Dufuniac Springs. They have the Civic Center and they have the Chautauqua Building. And I don't even know why they have a fee schedule at all. Because, you know, Joe Blow comes up and wants to do this, and they grant him a waiver. And then the next person that's going to have a birthday, they grant him a waiver. So what's the point in having a fee system if you're not going to use it? And that money should be used to help restore and maintain those buildings.
Really, most of the cost of maintaining and destroying.
We have to maintain these parks. We have to cut the grass, make sure the water's working, you know. So it's expensive. And I maybe don't mind so much churches and the schools, but any other, I still think should come before this board.
We can certainly redraft to just say churches and schools, modify church organizations.
But even for those who want to come back in front of the board, for those that we don't, why wouldn't we put the approval process to county administration since they're available daily, whereas the board is every two weeks?
That, what, the intent of the changed ordinance was to give it to Parks and Recreation and Administration instead of the board.
But I would want to know if it was put in the administration's hands. My only trouble is I would want to know when they grant a waiver, because when they start granting too many of them, I want to know.
We can redraft along that line.
Not that we trust him, you know.
Should I bring that back?
Yes, sir. We'd be happy to bring that back.
You know, I mean, I think at the thousands and thousands of dollars, Dufuniac is losing on these buildings that, you know, if you can afford to throw a party, you certainly afford $50 to rent the building. You know, same here.
We'll be happy to bring back that one.
Mark Quinn was the last time they looked at these fees that they're charging. Because I'm looking at a baseball field, $8 an hour for lights, and they got multiple lights up there. Bound they burn more than that.
I don't know when they actually studied the cost, but the previous resolution was 2014-37, so that was sometime this year. But I don't know when they actually studied the cost.
$50 to pay for one light, Missus.
I think they just worked on these. I think.
Yeah, I want to say we did it this year.
We were not charging for lights. We were just, they were on all night sometimes. So we kind of, you know, tightened things up. But I think there's, I think Shane and Brad probably worked on those ball field schedules. But unfortunately, as Rick mentioned to me, somebody went out last night and did wheelies all over Helen McColl Park and just ripped it up.
That's been the same ones that did it up here at high school at Freeport. They got right in front of the school and tore it up. I'm not sure, but I've seen it today.
So, you know.
Sunday night.
Probably Sunday night.
Thank you, Commissioners. We'll bring, we'll bring a second shot at that back to you.
And you know, one thing, dear old Hazel Bush used to say, she's my mother, if you pay for it, if you've got a money investment in it, you have a tendency to take better care of it than if you don't pay for it.
The next item, Commissioners, is a request to consider and approve an engagement letter with the Warner Law for them to advise and represent the board with respect to counts one, three, and six in the matter of forehand versus prebule rish. This is one of those situations where the Florida Association of County Trust is covering a portion of the lawsuit, and we would be paying for the other three counts. And I believe I sent you a memo detailing which counts would be covered.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Any other comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
By the way, that's prebule rish and Walton County to defend. It's not just prebule rish. The next item is a request from the Girl Scouts of Northwest Florida to grant an easement across some property that the county owns for purposes of ingress and egress. As you may or may not know, the Girl Scouts of Northwest Florida own a significant piece of property between Mossy Head and the River. They've started or want to start some timber operations on part of it, and also to create another access to the camp on another, on that same area. The nearest access is off of a small county road through a small piece of property we own. Public Works has vetted the request and has no objections to it. If the council doesn't, we would ask you to grant easement, authorize the chairman to sign it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Sacred Heart Hospital to ask you to approve a certificate of public convenience and necessity for neonatal transport services to Sacred Heart. This is a new service that Sacred Heart is providing. And in order for transport to occur for these services, we have to grant to them a certificate of public convenience and necessity, allowing them to make the transport, and also ask you to approve the contract. We have reviewed the contract. Sacred Heart's legal staff has reviewed the contract and is ready to go.
Is that air transport or ground transport?
It can include air transport, yes. It doesn't have to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Any other comments? Public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And Commissioners, as you know, we had previously scheduled an executive session for today on the DeFrances versus Walton County, case number 2012 CA. We need to reschedule that, and did y'all decide on a time?
Mr. Warner is available for either January meeting.
Either January meeting you choose. We can do it. Have we found 3:30?
Actually, we could do 3:00.
3 o'clock.
It's going to be a law room. Perhaps. I just wanted to cover it up. What's the date on that? What's the date? January 13th.
We'll just need a motion to schedule the meeting for that date and that time.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any other comments? Public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Just a quick update.
Motion carries.
We have now received and have installed the software you allowed us to buy. So you're going to see some, hopefully, in the next two months, some different style, different looking reports out of our office. So thank you for that, and my staff is looking forward to working with it.
Commissioner Meadows.
Yes, two things. First one is, based on the traffic we're seeing and the number of developments that are coming through down in South Walton for review, and the AVCON study, which suggested that we look at transit in some way, some form or fashion, I'm asking the board to authorize Admin and me, or whoever wants to do it, to get with the Northwest Regional Planning Council and bring back information to the board about the transit study that they can conduct and would conduct for us. And I think you got a couple of letters in your, in the packet from various people. There's a lot of interest out there for it. I think Mr. Tom Stein is in the audience. He's been working on this for quite some time. And I think we have from the Florida Wildlife Federation, Mr. Jay Lyles, who is also in the audience. So there is a lot of interest for this. So I would just like to ask that the board authorize maybe Admin, myself, me, and whoever else in staff and the public want to go meet with the Planning Council and find out what a transit study includes and how much it is and what it would involve.
And you would bring this back then to the board?
Oh, yeah. And we'd bring it back, give a presentation about the study, and then, you know, we need to look at, I think, all options.
And if that's, did you make that in form of a motion, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Did you do that? Okay, I will second it because, you know, we've taken a lot of time looking at our, our studies to parking and what we need in parking wise and what we need. And I certainly feel that we do need additional parking, but a good transit system could solve one of our major problems.
Yeah, I think it's a piece of the puzzle, for sure.
I certainly, I think it's certainly a piece of the puzzle.
So, yeah, that's my motion that we.
I second your motion.
Okay, any other comment?
I'd just like to ask, I know you're considering 38. I think it's really great. If anybody drives down there, you know we need it. But could you also include a north-south study for future? I know in January, I'd like to bring a resolution of, you know, letting our staff look for grants for north-south so our workers up there can take advantage maybe of some kind of transit, when they come to, transit system when they come to work down here. You know, just an idea to see if we're, I know we tried it one time, maybe a little bit, you know, before the fact that we needed it, but now it truly seems to be needed. So if you could, you know, think about including that.
I think, you know, that could be part and parcel of the study is.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments?
Any other?
Hold on there. Any public comment?
Tom Stein.
Spell your last.
Pardon?
Spell your last name, please.
S.T.E.I.N.
Thank you.
Okay. We've discussed the study, I've discussed it with Rob Mahan and Mary. Okay. We've discussed the study, I've discussed it with Rob Mahan and Mary Robinson, West Florida Regional Planning. There's an engineer from Greenville, South Carolina, interesting automotive think tank up there and there. They want to be involved in the study. And part of the study certainly needs to be transit from the north to the south. So it's going to be part of it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Lee Moore, M-O-O-R-E. And I would just echo, I think it'd be a great thing to do. I would also encourage not limiting it anyway geographically. I think the north-south is a good thing to look at, and seen at Gulf Drive and 98, you know, and I would say look at the county as a whole. The scope of these things tends to be important, obviously, so just wanted to add that in. Thank you.
Any other? Seeing none, we have a motion, a second. Are you coming forward to speak, sir?
I was.
Okay, please come on.
Alan Roberts, R-O-B-E-R-T-S. I fully support this study, and I think Tom has done a great job thus far putting it together. So I hope you vote in approval of it. That is all.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson.
That is all.
Not a fly this time?
You never know. What's going on, Allison?
I don't have a fly, but I'm burning up.
Well, you know, we can't afford air.
For the record, my name is Bob Hudson, H-U-D-S-O-N. Excuse me, I have a little bit of cold I got from my grandson on Thanksgiving. So if I sound like I'm in a barrel, that's because I am. And if I'm swatting flies, it's because I'm taking medication to get rid of the cold bill. My concern over this issue is, is all of the public transits that I know about are heavily subsidized by government. And I just want to make sure, before we get too far down the road on this issue, that we understand the cost, that we're potentially, and I'm assuming that's one of the things the study's going to tell us. But I think there was a study that was done, or I'll say trial run, that was done on 38 this summer. I think there were about 3,900 people that rode that tram all summer long, 90 something days, which calculates out to about how many people per day? It's going to be a tough sell, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of its economic feasibility, but we look forward to working with y'all on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Finch, F-I-N-C-H, owner of Sunshine Shuttle and Limousine. Actually, we ran a test program for 90 days, had 5,000 riders, 2,000 cars off the road on 38. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think what you're going to see is, you know, every summer it's just going to, you know, it's going to get worse and worse and worse. And so at least we stick our toes in the water and find out what's out there, I think. Panama City Beach did a transit under a CRA, Community Redevelopment Agency, and they're, it has to have blight, and their blight was traffic congestion. So, you know, that's, I mean, there's a lot of different ways we could skin the cat, but anyway, that's all.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the second thing I have is, we have located a location at Legion Park for the two tennis courts that we're going to go on Helen McCall Park. We think it's a more centrally located location, and the tennis courts fit. We would move the basketball court, we would recreate it. There's plenty of parking. So, and we would use the same funding that we had approved for the tennis courts at Helen McCall. So, and I think we have an RF, something RFP out for tennis court.
This is a straight bid.
Straight bid. We have a straight bid out, and so this is, that would apply to this. It is in Sarah Commander's district, and so we, the guys checked with her. She says she's okay with it, I think.
I'm thrilled to use your money.
She's thrilled to use, she's thrilled to use our money. But it will be, it will, yeah, it really is. It's not coming from the black fees.
It's part of the $10 million.
Yeah. And, but, anyway. So the tennis community and all the young kids that play tennis, I think this will be a great location for it. There will not be any lights, it won't be alighted, so it will not disturb the neighborhood at night. And so I guess, do I need a motion to relocate those to Legion? Because I told you all I'd come back and tell you where the tennis courts were going to end up. So I make the motion that we relocate the tennis courts. There's two tennis courts and two under age 10 mini courts that would go on Legion and Legion Park.
I'll second the motion.
Can I make one suggestion? I suspect that may affect the bids that are out there because I.
They're over the limit.
Yeah, the bids were probably for a specific location, and they were engineered to a specific location. So what we may do, you can go ahead and make your motion, a second, but we may have to rebid it.
Can you tweak, can you tweak the bids? Just tell them that, yeah, that it's now moved.
Just understand it may cause a slight delay.
It'd actually be an easier location, because Legion Park is relatively flat.
And it could be, it works fine. I just want to make sure.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Just do, see what you can do.
Motion, a second. Any other comments? Any public comment? Yes, sir.
As long as they don't end up in the bag, the ball's in the bag, we're fine. I don't think, it's pretty far.
Blake Ward, W-A-R-D. I am supportive of the tennis courts. I live in the neighborhood. I think it'll be great. I did hear you say you will keep basketball available for the children?
Yes. Yes, we're going to, we're going to take that basketball court and move it, move it, shift it down a little bit.
Okay, that'd be great. Well, I'm in full support. Ms. Harris.
Suzanne Harris, H-A-R-R-I-S. I think y'all did the right thing by waiting till the end of December to do, to accept Brad's or not to accept Brad Pickles resignation. But I think what bothers a lot of us is Tuesday night, after your meeting last week, Brad Pickle.
Ms. Harris, the issue right now is the tennis courts. We will have public comment after this.
I'm so sorry. So I'll just sit right here and I'll be right back.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion, a second on the floor. Okay, motion, a second. No other comment? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And I would ask, do we have any status updates you can bring? Go back to the next meeting about the wastewater treatment plant that we're taking over in Miramar Beach to use as a park?
We're taking over a wastewater management treatment plant?
Okay. At the next meeting, would somebody give us that update?
Oh, spray fields.
Spray field, okay.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, we can. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Commander.
Mine was about Brad, and so I've already made the comments.
Okay. Commissioner Jones.
Nothing.
Commissioner Chapman.
Nothing.
Okay, I have nothing. Additional public comments? Ms. Harris, thank you.
Suzanne Harris, H-A-R-R-I-S. I do think y'all did the right thing to wait. I do think Brad has a very good reputation. My problem is that last Tuesday, when all of us showed up for a meeting here, after the meeting, he told three different people that he had turned in his letter of resignation that morning. Now I've waited a week, and finally, I guess on Sunday or Monday, I sent a public records request in, thinking, well, since we haven't heard anything, maybe these people, but it was three different people. It wasn't three people standing together. We're wrong. And so I got it. I think what bothers the public is that when the person who has the contract in the middle of a very important project is in the hall after it's over telling people he turned in his letter of resignation that day, and then I contacted Cindy today to ask her, did she know this last week? And she said yes. And I guess all of y'all probably knew it. But I think this is something on updates or something that the public needs to be told. If somebody resigns and they're out telling they've resigned, then I think the public needs to know it, rather than we're just not saying anything until after December and try to change his mind. Whether he changes his mind or not, the beach project has to continue doing whatever y'all decide to do with it. And I don't think it should come back. I think everybody, when any consultant that we have a contract with quits and tells the public he's quit, I think, or tells certain people in the public he resigned that day, I think the rest of the people who are affected by this beach renourishment should know the same thing. And I have to find it out by public records request. I think that's just the sunshine.
Thank you.
I don't remember getting it till late last week.
Any other? Mr. Hudson.
I didn't get it, so.
Bob Hudson is my name, H-U-D-S-O-N. I'm here today kind of at a end of mission role. Tuesday, I sit on my last mosquito board meeting here in South Walton, something I've enjoyed doing for six years, but that day is gone. But one of the things that I'd like to do is clean up some things that were on my plate. And I had had a meeting, Mark, with you and with Larry and with Cindy Meadows concerning some potential changes to the land development code or comp plan. I can't remember which, Larry, at this point in time. But the ditches that we have are very key and vital to Walton County, particularly in the southern part of the county. And it's our hope that we can, I can report that that's in progress on Tuesday as my kind of checkoff then.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Hudson, thank you for your public service.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Lot of dead mosquitoes out there, please.
2001.
Any other? Okay, before we go into the growth management aspect of it, a reminder, there is no Hampton Inn item on the agenda. That is at the Planning Commission on January the 8th. We're going to take a recess until 5:30, please.
Mr. Chairman, we have three items on the agenda. The second item is a request to continue. Shall we handle that one first, or you want to handle that one as we come to it?
Go ahead and take it.
Okay. Number two is the Watercolor Town Center Homes. We have a request to continue that one until the December 22nd meeting of the board up in Dufuniac Springs, and staff recommends that we continue that as requested.
Is that made?
Motion, a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next two items are quasi judicial items needing to be sworn in.
Anyone anticipates testifying on any matter scheduled for a quasi judicial hearing tonight, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you would give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Has any commissioner received any ex parte communications regarding any item on the quasi judicial? Seeing none, any commissioner know of any conflict they'd need to raise? None of those? Is there any objections to any of the notices that were published for tonight's hearings? None of those. Mr. Dyson, it's all yours.
Mr. Davis. Chairman, number one on the agenda is Seescape Town Center. I'll ask Renee Bradley, Senior Planner, to give you a brief presentation on this application.
Good evening, Renee Bradley, Walton County Planning Development Services. This is the Seescape Town Center, project number 140010101. Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated requesting approval of 51,665 square feet of general commercial, consisting of 22,390 square feet of retail, 16,525 square feet of restaurant, 12,750 square feet of outdoor events plaza, that includes a Euro Bungee and Zip Line Entertainment area. The project's on 6.72 acres with a future lane use of coastal center with an accursed commercial area of the Seescape Development Regional Land Pact. The project's located on south of US Highway 98 at intersection of Seescape Drive and US Highway 98. This project was required and has received Design Review Board approval. The outdoor entertainment area is outside the 400-foot US Highway 98 scenic corridor. All technical review comments have been met with the following conditions. Environmental conditions, and according with 15.0500 of the Land Development Code, provide a copy of the MPDES permit and the stormwater pollution prevention prior to commencement of the development. Number two is provide a current copy of all state and federal wetland permits prior to commencement of the development. The Planning Commission recommended approval at their November 13th meeting. We have received no public comments on this project. Also, the following planning conditions are required. These conditions are considering permits. The following permits will be needed. MPDES permit, FDPC potable water permit, FDPC sanitary sewer permit, FDPC core wetland permit, also an FDPC stormwater permit, which they currently have, already have an extension. In summary, this project is part of the Seescape Development Regional Land Pact that is approved for 176,185 square feet of commercial, in which 17,198 square feet has been built, and 158,987 square feet are remaining prior to this request. With the approval of this Seescape Town Center request, there will be 107,322 square feet of general commercial remaining within the development. Recommendation from staff is that this project meets the requirements of the Seescape DRI Ordinance 2008-34, Walton County Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan, and staff recommends approval of this project with all the aforementioned conditions. I'd be glad to answer any questions for the board.
Is the applicant here? Do you wish to make any comments?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and also spell your last name.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Chris Brockmeyer. It's B-R-O-C-M-E-I-E-R, and I'm the engineer at record on the project.
My name's Cameron Hughes, H-U-G-H-E-S, and I'm the architect on the project.
Just, we appreciate your time this evening. As part of the process, we do have some graphics. I don't know how well you can see them over there. I can move them up. I wanted the public to be able to kind of see them, too. We've got some graphics in addition to what we put in the package that came to you. Basically, what we've got in the development, to give you an overall, it's a mix of restaurants, which right now we've got 15,000, actually 16,525 on the restaurants. And then we've got retail of 22,390. So we've got a good mix of retail there. And then we've got a deck out back, if you would, a tiki deck style. We're building over the wet detention pond out back. So kind of using the facility there. With that, we got the architect and myself, the engineer, any questions you might have. I think Renee did a great job. Thanks again, Renee, for your review.
Does the board have any questions? Have any testimony from any of the people in the audience?
It looks like it's going to be a nice addition to the whole program over there. There's no other comments. I have a motion to approve with conditions set forth by planning.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comment? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the last item on the agenda is Prominence Phase One North Platte. It's a platte that consists of 120 residential units on 10.37 acres. Affirmance Dale Horton, we have Tim Whaler here, Senior Planner, give any questions. But they're asking for platte approval.
Is the applicant here? Yes. Any comments you want to make?
Just to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for him?
I just have one. This was also included, the platte was essentially included in your DRI. Is that correct?
We are plating property within the DRI.
Windows wicker.
Yes. Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to give testimony?
Sir, we, Chairman, he needs his, her.
You got, spell your last name for her, please. Yes.
Smith, S-M-I-T-H.
Thank you. Trying to make that a habit for people to come up to give their first and last names and spell their last name.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience wish to give testimony? Seeing none, what's wishes of the board?
Second, C-O-M-A-N-D-E-R.
T-R-O-U-B-L-E-M-A-K-E-R. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That's all we have. That's all we have. Motion is adjourned, or meeting's adjourned. Motion is adjourned, or the meeting's adjourned.[560.29]